At seven o'clock, Chapter 231 PL 1975. The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing delivery, and filing of this notice on September 1st, 2020. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Korean News, the Echo Sentinel, and tapped into Warren and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please all join me and rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
Bits of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bellish.
Here.
Mr. Bishi.
Here.
Mr. Brzee.
Here.
Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Here.
Mr. Franco.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Zahn.
Here.
And Mr. Bellman.
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the August 31st, 2020 board meeting.
Second, gentlemen.
Do I have a second, Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Bishi.
Yeah.
Mr. Brzee.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Nothing on the HIV or suspension reports. The board received one email from a community member advocating for in-person board meetings. That's all to report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. A president's remarks. Good evening and welcome to our September 21st meeting of the Warren School Board. We are two weeks into the new school year, and I want to applaud to all who are involved in making it work. Our parents and families for helping their students to excel in the current setting. Our students for working hard and getting used to this current setup. And last, but not least, our teachers and administration. The current hybrid model must be extremely stressful. But when I listen into the calls that my own children have, I'm full of appreciation of the excellent job that these teachers do. Along with this, I want to welcome our new teachers. In the past, we would have had an event before this meeting where the board would have been able to meet you in person. Due to the pandemic, I want to welcome you via the Zoom meeting. We are obliged to you for you having chosen this noble profession. Much has been said of essential workers in recent months, but it is you who makes them. Those who make our young minds into the key members of our society. You, teachers, are the role models for the future. Your students will look up to you, count on you for direction and encouragement. Your positive example and a good sense of humor will inspire them to embrace learning as their key to success. It has been said that teaching is the profession that makes all other professions possible. You represent for so many of them a safe haven, consistency, and change. You can excite in them the thrill and love of learning. You will guide them, help them in setting goals, support them in these challenging times, and make their futures possible. All of this is true under normal circumstances, but it's especially true in these times for which we have no previous experience. These times offer specific challenges, yes, but they also offer unique opportunities for which little in our own educations or experiences has prepared us. Let us all learn from one another together as to how to ensure that all of our students are receiving the very best care that we call the Warren experience. We wish you all the best for your tenure in our schools, and we hope that you will be considerate, kind, understanding, accepting, and one of the best memories in years to come for those whose lives you touch. May you and those in your care shine brighter every day. With this, I want to welcome you on behalf of the board to our district. I also highlight agenda item C8, the resignation of Board of Education member, Mrs. Susie Chu. For this, I would like to make a resolution, and I hope that my fellow board members can support this resolution. Whereas, Mrs. Susie Chu has served the children and community of Warren Township as a Board of Education member this past year. And whereas, Mrs. Chu has served the board as a member of the Curriculum, Communications, and Technology Committee. And whereas, Mrs. Chu has stepped in the teaching staff, parent community, and administrative team a reputation of trustworthiness, fairness, and commitment to the district's high standards. And whereas, Mrs. Chu has served as a champion for excellence in all areas with a special focus on the district's finances. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Warren Township Board of Education on behalf of the entire Warren community thus hereby extends its sincere thanks and gratitude to Mrs. Chu for her service to the children of Warren and thus hereby wish her all the best in all of her future endeavors. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, ma'am.
Mrs. Leonard, could you please?
All board members only? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Mrs. Chu, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Along with this, I highlight that there is a vacancy for the remainder of the year for which the board is accepting applications. This is a cover letter and a CV. Please send them to our Board Secretary, Mrs. Patricia Leonard. The deadline for this is Wednesday, September 30th with a vote and appointment by the board at our next board meeting on October 5th. With that, I want to hand it over to Dr. Mingle for the superintendent's remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman, and Ms. Chu will have that delivered to your home tomorrow, the framed version of the resolution. Thank you for your service to the community.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Bellman opened up with really wonderful comments welcoming our new staff and recognizing all of our staff, and I want to echo that and remind everybody on the call that being able to reopen and stay reopened is not something we should take for granted. It's because of the staff that we have in the district from Mr. Peyton, his team I see on the camera right now. And we're going to hear a little bit about all the work that took place over the summer. Our 12-month staff, like our secretarial staff and transportation, our teaching staff, our administrators, our paraprofessionals, the whole team, along with our leadership, our board, by coming together and working together all summer long, we were able to get to a place where we reopened now for our 10th day of school today with in-person instruction. We know that the students in Warren Township are receiving at least as much more in-person instruction than almost any other school district in our area, and that's because of the people who you see on the screen and you know that you see in our schools every day. So, I want to echo Mr. Bellman's comments and thank everybody for the hard work because, as he said, it's extremely stressful. And, you know, our teachers are delivering an instructional program that six months ago didn't exist. It didn't exist one month ago. It came into existence about 10 days ago when they brought it to life. So, as I said at our last board meeting, all of the planning in the world that we can do over the summer goes away when the rubber meets the road and we implement, and our teachers deserve a great deal of credit for that. If you personally know one of our teachers or one of our administrators, they deserve a note of thanks. It would go a long way to helping them understand how much they're appreciated. With that in mind, I want to share that although we are now 10 school days into the delivery of Hybrid 1.0, we have been working on what comes next since the first day of school. Our return to school committee met literally on the first day of school to start talking about what would be the appropriate next step once we can prove that this is a healthy and safe way to return our students. So, what I'll share tonight is that we are currently analyzing the possibility of returning all of our K and 1 students and ideally our K1 and 2 students to school every day, hopefully as soon as a few weeks from now. Our intention is that at the next board meeting on October 5th, we'll bring a proposal to the board of what it would take for us to be able to return our youngest learners, which, as we've talked about over the summer, we know are the students who need to be in person the most and carry the lowest level of health and safety risk and concern. We know that distance learning in kindergarten, even when it's only for part of the time, is extremely challenging. The technology is more challenging, the amount of time that parents need to be on task with their child is more challenging, and what it takes for a staff member, a teacher, to be able to deliver both is more challenging. So, right now, we are in the analysis phase. We will bring that work through our return to school committees, the ad hoc board committee, with the goal of returning as many K1 and hopefully 2 students to school full-time, meaning five days a week under the half-day hybrid model schedule as soon as possible. So, much more to come on that. Those of you that might have children in K1 and 2, if they're currently enrolled in full distance, you'll be getting an email tomorrow asking you to participate in a survey to help us understand what that, what impact it might have on your family if we were to make that change. For example, we need to know if families might send their kids back if it was every day versus keeping them at home if they're in full distance. Similarly, we are also reaching out because there are quite a few families who enrolled students in our kindergarten program over the summer and then disenrolled them when we went to the hybrid model. And we know that some of those families have told our principals, as soon as you go back full-time, we're bringing our kids back into the Warren School. So, we are also surveying those families. Thanks to the work of our data team, we have all the contact information for families that enrolled and then disenrolled so that we can predict what they might do as well, again, to bring those recommendations back to the board at our next meeting. So, what can you do to help? If you're a parent on the call, the most important thing you can do to help us be able to bring kids back more is to fill out the health form every single day. So, I'm going to share last week's statistics with you. Last week, we received 81% of the health checks on time from our community. That ranged from a low Hold on one second. From a low of 75% at the middle school to a high of 90% at Mount Hora. That means that on those days, at the middle school, 25% of students did not submit a health form, which means our school nurse and our administrators have to spend a great deal of time in the morning screening those students manually as they arrive at the building or at the elementary schools as well. That takes away from our ability to operate the school district safely, and so that's one of the factors that will lead to whether we can return more students to school for more of the time. Another one is our ability to implement our health and safety protocols. Our kids are awesome. The mass compliance in the school district is phenomenal, much better than most of us adults would have guessed it would be. It doesn't mean that our teachers aren't working hard to keep it that way, but our kids are definitely handling the responsibility as well. I did hear from some colleagues in districts and other parts of the country that around Week 3, people start to take it easy, which is where we are. So, hopefully, we won't see that this week, but we'll be keeping an eye on it. So, the number one and two things, filling out the health forms and making sure we comply with our health and safety guidelines for sure. Couple other things I want to mention that are on the agenda tonight. Item A4 is about a calendar change. I just want to ease any concerns that people are about what that might be. All that does is remove the words "half-day" from the days that are parent conference days because we will have asynchronous learning in the afternoon on those days like we do on the other days. There's no actual change to days in or out of school. I would remind everybody that by order of Governor Murphy, the Tuesday, that is Election Day, is a full-distance learning day for all students in the state of New Jersey. So, that is on our calendar, but I just want to remind everybody, we'll keep on reminding you about that. Item A6 on the agenda tonight is an adjustment to the return to school plan. The only adjustment in the return to school plan is clarifying that our C program is a full-time Cohort C program. It doesn't change anything for any families that don't already know about it, but we have to formally adopt that change so we can submit it to the county superintendent. And finally, item C7 approves after-school activity advisors. Tomorrow, parents across the district will receive notification through Ms. Hunt, who is our middle school math teacher and our after-school activities coordinator for the whole district, with opportunities for students at all schools to get involved in after-school activities that'll begin soon, like we did in the spring. Great opportunities for kids to work across schools at the elementary level and engage in some really neat enrichment activities starting soon. So, Mr. Bellman, that's it. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much for these remarks, and I will return it back to you for the presentations. You will provide us a new staff introduction, and I am really looking forward to meeting those new teachers.
Thank you. So, I'm going to change the video here so that everybody can see it.
Very much, Mr. Peyton. Really glad to see how our staff worked, how hard over the summer, and what was completed. And I'm really happy that, thanks to our voters who supported the referendum in 2019, that we could save these $2 million from all these projects. With that, I want to move on to the discussion. This is for board members. If you have any questions or comments, please use the raise your hand feature on the video. Raise your hand. Right now, I don't see anybody from the board. Oh, Mrs. Taylor, please go ahead.
I just have a comment to say, you know, as I said before on these calls, I work with teachers and work primarily in the New York City DOE with placing our teachers. And we always tell, you know, we're always trying to allay their fears and tell them that it's really difficult right now to be a type A person because of all of the uncertainty. And I also do a lot of work in Newark, too, and they are experiencing a lot of uncertainty. And even though we are, I just want to give kudos to our staff and our teachers and everyone in the district for the hard work because when I come back here, there's some, at least some sense of normalcy with the way the district is run and the way we've been able to execute on the plans that we made. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Taylor. Other board members? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. Please move ahead.
I concur with everything Ms. Taylor said, but I also want to give a nod to all of the summer workers. I'm really grateful that Mr. Peyton put together this presentation and, you know, have a great deal of appreciation for the voters that allowed us to move forward with the referendum. I can only compare a little bit to some other districts. I know that in addition to all the obstacles regarding staffing and et cetera that they had getting their schools up and operating, many school districts unfortunately also had problems with their facilities and their facilities not being ready to accommodate the, what COVID-19 required of us with regard to ventilation and HVAC, et cetera. So, I'm really pleased that, you know, over many years of paying attention to the capital improvement needs of our facilities that we were in a position to, you know, move forward without that being an obstacle. So, thank you to Mr. Peyton. Thank you to the voters. Good work.
Thank you very much. Any other person raising the hand? Seeing none. Moving over to agenda item nine, sorry, 10, committee reports. Mr. Breezy, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. The Finance, Operations, and Security Committee met on Monday, September 14th at 6:30 PM. The first two committee agenda items were followed from the previous meeting, the first being the traffic beacons at the three schools. The update there is that the county is expected to begin the work at the end of this month, September. The second item is the SEHBP, which I believe is the School Employee Health Benefits Program. Update, if you recall from the previous readout, this is more of a placeholder at the moment, but certainly an important one. The rates are expected to be formally adopted on the 15th, and what that really means to the district at this point is actually unknown. We won't know the impact until open enrollment is completed, which is around mid-November. So, then we will be able to know from there whether there's any sort of financial impact plus or minus to us, and we'll, of course, as a committee, bring that back to the board. The committee also reviewed the previous committee goals and recommends the five proposed goals for the board approval on tonight's, which is agenda, tonight's agenda, which is be item B6. And the committee also reviewed the Capital Improvement Plan and made a slight shift to support the business, excuse me, the district's needs, including moving up the central school partial roof replacement, and that is on tonight's agenda as item B5. Along those lines, while reviewing the Capital Improvement Plan, the funding piece came up, which it naturally would. And we're planning to discuss that in more detail at our next meeting. Given what we just saw, the $2 million in savings, we touched on this briefly, but the committee thinks, feels that we should explore this option, at least from a due diligence perspective, to see if it is something worth exploring further, if it is still supported by the state or in what the other options are. So, more to come on that for funding the Capital Improvement Plan, and our next committee meeting will be on October 26th, 2020. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Breezy. I think Mrs. Taylor, you, thank you. Please go ahead, Mrs. Taylor.
Yes, the Curriculum, Technology, and Communications Committee met on September 14th, and we also agreed to our committee goals that you'll see in item A5. We received updates that have been made to the curriculum documents, and those are also in the agenda items that the board had an opportunity to look at. We heard recommendations from Mr. Kimick about grading and reporting for 2020, 21, and the committee just expressed the importance of high-quality feedback from teachers. And then we will reflect in the spring on the work that we've done in the fall to see if there are any best practices that we want to move into the new school year. We also discussed the options for future in-person board meetings and have a goal, pending the technology that we want to use, of meeting in person with the board members in the middle school for our October 19th meeting and maintaining the same Zoom structure for the audience for that meeting. But we just want to make sure that the technology plans that we have in place that we think will maintain the same sort of level of engagement and just audio quality will be in place. And that's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Taylor. Any other committee reports? Dr. Mingle, please.
The ad hoc return to school committee met last Wednesday, and some of what we reviewed is already been mentioned in other places, but we reviewed items that would be affected by tonight's agenda. You can see items on there about a technology purchase related to a firewall system, which will, has helped already with some bandwidth concerns and internet traffic concerns, the after-school activities, various staffing transfers that are on the agenda, the return to school plan changes, which I mentioned earlier, but just to reiterate or to clarify, one of our special education programs being in our Cohort C. The, there's also other administrative actions that we just informed the board about related to how we're handling work from home accommodations, our communications plan, parent and staff surveys that are in operation. We are providing food service assistance to 13 students from seven families, which was we advised the board about. Attendance self-check updates, you know, all the different operational pieces that go along with our ability to reopen schools and keep them reopened. And we had an initial discussion about our plan to investigate and analyze the ability to bring back more K1 and 2 students for more days, as I mentioned earlier tonight. Our next meeting will be on September 30th.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. As far as I'm aware, there are no other committee reports. With that, I want to move over to public comment. We invite the public to participate in our meeting. We ask you to be brief and respectful with your comments and appreciate that among many voices, there will be areas of agreement and disagreement among reasonable people. But in this time, that is so stressful for our children and us all. We need to practice and model good listening and kindness, the skills we so value our own teachers. I remind you that board policy allows for public commentary for three minutes per participant and for 15 minutes. At that time, the board must then authorize an additional increment of 15 minutes as per our board policy. All speakers have to provide their name and address and should turn on their camera so that hearing impaired members at our meeting can read what is said. To participate, please click at the Zoom meeting on participants that will open up all the participants, and there at the bottom is a raise hand feature. Once you want to participate, please click that, and I can see in the list all that want to contribute. Now, please go ahead and raise the hand if you want to participate. Mrs. Nellie Pucci, please go ahead. State your name and address. Mrs. Pucci? You have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, sorry. I was trying to start the video. I just want to say thank you to all the teachers and staff for returning to our schools, opening the schools. Thank you to everyone. Today, I checked the state of New Jersey education site to see if any changes and exceptions have been made for hybrid schedules regarding gifted services. It seems that NJAC still requires that districts provide appropriate K through 12 services for students identified as gifted and talented. Our E2 program in the middle school led by Mrs. Cooper is personally one of the best things in our school district. I think it's a disservice to the many students of WMS who are now receiving enrichment services or opportunities to participate in academic competitions, i.e. quiz bowl, math competitions during this time. I urge Dr. Mingle to find a way to utilize and maximize his staff to their strengths. Mrs. Cooper's being underutilized in support role at this time. I don't think it's acceptable not to have services and support for E2 until further notice. My question to you is, when will these services be provided to the children again? In the meantime, the E2 children should be allowed to work on other things of their interest while it could be drawing, reading a book, once they finish their work in the classrooms instead of sitting idling in the classrooms. I am concerned that their love for learning and intellectual curiosity is declining as they are not receiving their services. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Pucci, and can we please also have your address?
Oh, sorry. 33 Washington Valley.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mike Castagna. Please go ahead.
Yes, my name is Michael Castagna. I live at Nine Monday Lane, and I have two sons, one in fourth and one in kindergarten, that attend ALT. What I'd like to say, well, first is that I appreciate the efforts of everybody that's gotten us kicked off so far for the school year. And while I'm happy that it seems the school year has gotten off on a relatively good foot for most of the elementary school kids, I don't think the same should be said about what's going on in ALT right now. And I say that because while we've adopted the same hybrid model as the other two or three schools, elementary schools, we have not adopted the same policy as it pertains to synchronous learning. Our students are receiving virtually no synchronous learning. So, the first thing I'd like to ask is just for an explanation as to how that decision was made and how it makes sense to bring children into the school and not give them live lessons, especially when the other schools in our district are providing them. That being said, regardless of who made the decision or why, it's my opinion that it needs to change immediately. Our students at ALT are receiving a severe disservice right now by not getting synchronous learning. We don't have to go into the specifics of how synchronous learning is advantageous over asynchronous learning. The bottom line is asynchronous learning isn't the way, right? It's not the way that our children should be taught. It's the backup. It was okay in the spring when we weren't prepared. We didn't really know how to deal with this, but it's my opinion that whenever and wherever synchronous learning is possible, it should be implemented. I'd also like to say that because we know that the other districts in our area, as well as the schools in our district, are providing synchronous learning, we can't any longer say that we're all in the same boat. Our students are being left behind. And the sooner that we change this, the better. I know that we've had the entire summer to get ready for this, and I just can't wrap my head around the reason why one out of four schools is doing it one way and the other three are doing it another. So, I strongly implement whoever's in charge of making decisions to change this immediately for the betterment of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Castagna. Next is Mr. Michael Puskowski.
Hi, it's actually Rebecca Puskowski and trying to turn my video on. Thank you. We're at 17 Forest Drive. And I just also wanted to thank the board and all the staff and Dr. Mingle for everything they've done. I know this has not been a normal summer or return to school. So, thank you all. been a normal summer or return to school. So thank you all for for all you've done. Thank you to all the teachers. I know they are going above and beyond. We have a kindergartner, and I'm excited to hear that you are considering sending them back earlier than possibly the rest. I really wanted to just come on to voice my concern about the challenge that that is for that age group. We also have a fourth grader who's doing really well with the hybrid model. So it seems to, you know, as the children get older, they're able to do more and more on their own. And I think it does work for the the higher grades, but for the little ones, it is really a challenge. So I'm excited to hear more about that, and I hope that we can make that possible. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Moving on to Rosa Kraus, please go ahead.
Rosa Kraus to Holly Drive. First, I would like to say thank you to all the teachers for doing a great job in having to adjust to the new way of teaching. We asked them to step up to the plate and they delivered. Kudos to them. I would like to get some clarifications with the current learning delivery method. It was my understanding that the plan approved was that there would be two sets of teachers, one that would deliver the in-person learning and the other that would deliver the distant learning, and that is not what is happening. When when and why was the plan changed without being communicated to the parents? With the students being in synchronized schedule, there is just too much time wasted at home with 30 minutes of exercise followed by 20 minutes of wind, which some kids don't even get to use. And let's not forget the hand washing breaks. It was my understanding the kids would be working independently with no assistance from the parents. Now, Dr. Mingle, I I'm happy to hear about that you might be bringing kindergartners and first graders back, but I respectfully ask you and Mr. Kimmich to sit and observe a typical kindergartner schedule. The students can read only basic words, and yet we're asking them, and I'm going to explain so parents who don't have kindergartners can see what this is all about. We're asking kids who can barely just read basic words to log into Google Meets, attend a live class, log off Google Meets, go into Class Link, read the assignment, alternate between YouTube and handouts, complete complete assignments, submit assignments, and yes, submit assignments via an iPad. Log back into Google Meets for another lesson plan, log off Google Meets, and again, the cycle is vicious. How can we request them to do this when they can barely follow a schedule? As an adult, I got overwhelmed. So how is any working parent supposed to work and manage this? And these poor teachers having to create these insane schedules. It was just unbelievable. Then I would like to address an issue that happened on Friday during sixth period class with my son. He was logged in to a Google Meet and someone logged in to the class twice, one of those times pretending to be my son and used profanity. The teacher and the entire class were shocked. I called school right away, spoke with the guidance counselor, but we are now more than 24 working hours, and I have yet to receive a call from any school official explaining to me what happened and ensuring to me that this will not happen again. And what controls the teachers and the school have in place to prevent that this will not happen again. I was very, very upset that I did not get a call today. Another thing, if on the day that the kids are not in school, quite honestly, why do we need to submit the COVID form? We're not tracking them on the weekends, so nothing is going to change between Thursday, Friday. So we're not tracking them on Thursday, on Saturday, and Sunday. Why bother to track them on the days that they're not in school? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Sumitra Nicholson.
This is Jeff Nicholson and Sumitra Nicholson. We're at 31 Livingston Avenue. First of all, we want to thank Dr. Mingle and the school board and the teachers and all the staff for all their hard work preparing for this year. We know it's been a crazy time, and we really appreciate all the work that has gone in to allowing us to have a hybrid model where our kids are going back to school for at least a couple of days a week. But having said that, we are concerned about some of the aspects of the remote learning that we are seeing right now. Specifically, the specials classes are still relying far too much, in our opinion, on asking children to simply watch videos and then do an assignment based on those videos, which in many cases does not even challenge them. For example, today, our son was asked to watch seven videos in the span of 40 minutes with no actual teacher interactions. As week three, one of our children hasn't even received an assignment in one of their specials. There hasn't been any significant live interactions between the kids and their specials teachers. At one point, we reached out to one of our children's specials teachers to ask for clarification and found it difficult to even get them to respond. So to be honest, teaching by simply assigning videos without live student-teacher interactions was one of the most frustrating aspects of the previous semester, and we're glad, at least for the most part during the day, that's a thing of the past. But our question is, why is it that specials right now are still being taught in this manner? Is there a plan for requiring all teachers to finally go and be taught by live interactions with students and teachers, and if so, by when? Or is it the plan that this current model for teaching specials by assigning videos for students to view with minimal teacher-student interaction will continue throughout the school year? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Franco Caruso.
Hi, I'm Marissa Caruso, 10 Monday Lane. As an elementary parent, my main concern is that from what we have seen so far at my child's school, the in-person days have mirrored the distance learning days. It appears as though students are completing asynchronous assignments while in the classroom setting. I believe there must be an emphasis on the synchronous piece moving forward. We are sending our children to school so they receive live instruction from our educators. By utilizing pre-recorded videos in the classroom, classroom discourse is eliminated. It's imperative that the students receive feedback in real time, so teaching and learning is adjusted and differentiated. As an educator, I believe that classes should replicate a traditional classroom when possible. I understand the difficulty of managing in-person and remote students simultaneously. However, it appears as though many of the elementary classrooms have a co-teacher model. Therefore, following a lesson, it would be most beneficial for one teacher to assist the in-person learners while the other teacher focuses on the remote learners. Lastly, I would like to urge you to bring K1 and second grade back to school as soon as possible. Second graders who very well could be performing as first graders are in dire need to be in person. Manipulating online platforms as well as their lack of keyboarding skills have made the last few weeks extremely difficult. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Adam.
Adam Joya, 14 Sugarwood Way.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yes.
So I don't want to pile on. I have a lot of thoughts that the people mentioned already. I would like to give kudos to Mr. Cook. He's doing just like he always does, a phenomenal job. The kids look forward to his his morning calls and sort of the parents. So, Mr. Cook, thank you. Really, it's been awesome. We brought this up a couple of board meetings about a dashboard. I'm looking for more than a dashboard of just the kids' schedules, but right now, if I want to see what my child's doing, I have to log into four, five, six different teacher websites. Reached out to a couple of teachers to see if there's a way the parents can kind of look in to see how the child is progressing. It doesn't seem there's anything right now. For the younger kids, it's kind of tough for them to tell us what's due, what's needed. So if we can kind of have some kind of tool that'll help us look in, one dashboard per child rather than teacher websites. Going back to what someone else said about specials, it's very difficult to learn a second language, even more difficult doing it remotely. And then we have Mandarin, which is an extremely difficult language with thousands of characters. And we have one teacher covering sixth, seventh, eighth grade all in the same time slot, so I'm not sure if we're addressing that. And then for the younger kids, they have Spanish. They're doing Google Translate, so there's not a whole lot of teaching and learning going on there. And then if you guys can share with us the data you're using to have the kid you're saying return kindergarten first graders, is there evidence that says kindergartners and first graders are less likely to carry the coronavirus? Why not first, second, third, fourth, fifth graders? And then is there some way that before the teacher send out links, there's instructions in those links, but sometimes they're not being tested. We're being told after you complete an assignment, you can submit your assignment through an eWeb, the link's at the bottom of the page, the link's not there. Is there some way to test those things? Because for the younger kids that aren't so technically savvy, they get extremely frustrated with that. So if there's somewhere we can test those things, that would be great. Other than that, I want to thank the administration, the teachers, the board for getting us to where we are right now, and hopefully we can continue to go in this positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your contribution. With this, we have reached the end of the first block. I would need a motion from a board member.
I'll make the motion to extend public commentary.
For 15 minutes?
15 minutes, yeah.
Do I have a second? Mr. Breezy. Board members only. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Abstentions? Public commentary is extended.
Thank you very much. Moving on in the list, I have Michael Jurista. Please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I also want to first start out by thanking the the board and specifically Dr. Mingle. Your videos throughout the summer updating us as to what we were expecting were frankly fantastic, and I had very high hope for what was going to happen in the fall. Unfortunately, those videos, at least where I'm coming from, did not come to fruition, at least in my school. And while I wasn't keen on participating in this hearing, after hearing Mr. Castagna's comments, who I'm unfamiliar with him specifically, I just want to reiterate that everything he said is correct. I am not sure why there is not consistency in our school compared to the other schools in the district. And from my opinion personally, I do not believe it is a teacher problem. My daughter's teacher at ALT is is great, and I don't believe it's a principal problem. I think I think she's absolutely wonderful. I'm concerned that this is a direction from either the board or the superintendent not providing our school with directions to be providing learning consistent with the state guidelines. And while I'll keep it short and sweet, the only thing I would ask is the board to look at and consider is the Governor's Executive Order, Executive Order 175, specifically paragraph 10A, which requires four hours of active learning per day, per student, whether you're remote or in-person. And right now, I can tell you that if I got four hours a week, that would be overestimating. So I hope that I'm hopeful that Dr. Mingle will be sending the kids back to school, but frankly, if you wait another week, you're going to be too far behind to catch up. So I request that you start acting on that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the list is Mariette.
Hello, I'm Mariette Jelitovic, 18, King George Road. I'm a parent of three students at ALT, K2nd and 4th. I wanted to, personally, I believe that you're doing a great job. I do understand some of the other parents' concerns about ALT. It was my belief that they were trying to teach all of the students all of the technology that's needed so that they could be more independent, which is why the school may have gotten start, may have started off more slowly. That's my hope and I'm my belief, hope for the best. But my main concern is social emotional health. And a lot of the students don't actually have an opportunity while they're in school to engage with each other. For example, like if you ask my kindergartner who's in her class, she has no idea because they're not able to have those kind of interactions. Part of kindergarten is being able to build those kind of relationships and bonds. I was wondering if it would, the other problem is, is that during their movement break, it's all very structured. And even when they're outside, I understand the need for a social distance without masks. But I'm wondering if you could potentially pull the students, not the parents, because it would be on the students who would be taking this on, to see if they would be willing to wear their masks. Would they be allowed then to be able to potentially have more, less structured play so that they could actually interact with other students and be able to develop bonds and relationships with other students? So I know that there are certain guidelines and restrictions, but it's my belief that if you're outside and you're wearing a mask, that you wouldn't have to be six feet apart based on the guidelines that are there. Like, we're allowed to go on the Warren Township Library Playground and play with a mask on, and it doesn't matter who shows up. So I'm just wondering if that's something that we could implement in this school. That's all.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Bodilo. Please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Jessica Bodilo, 9 Brady. I just wanted to start out, as as most people have tonight, by thanking all the teachers and the administration. I know very well how much hard work has gone into this and how much extra time everybody's putting in. And I want to commend the teachers and the administration for their efforts thus far. Others have spoken before me tonight, especially parents who are also educators, and they have probably articulated these thoughts much better than I'm about to. But I think it's important to speak because I would like to echo sentiments from Dr. Castagna, from Ms. Kraus, from the Puches, because I think it's important that you guys know that this is a majority feeling, that a lot of us do feel the same way. And that's really one of the only reasons why I am speaking tonight. One of the issues that I would love to see pursued is the K through and 1 going five days. Somebody had said before that they don't understand why that would be necessary. These kids can't read. They are just starting school. They had half their school year terminated because of COVID, and they really just didn't learn how to read. And so it's very difficult for them to go through a day, especially at home. I see it, you know, on a daily basis. I have to sit with my daughter, who's in first grade, for the entire lesson. My third grader, he can do things more independently, but without the synchronous learning, you know, we're just not getting it at ALT. There's there's just so much more parent interaction because they're not sure what they're supposed to do. I, too, was under the impression, whether that's wrong or right, that there was going to be separate teachers. I know I asked the question, and it wasn't answered a couple of times during board meetings because we didn't know yet, but that's the direction I thought we were going. I thought we had enough staff in order to do that. And so having these kids be at home trying to to do something, they're finished in two hours, whereas the kids in school are going the whole time because they have to break to wash their hands. They have to go outside. They have to walk down the hall, things like that. So I just wanted to to echo these sentiments and also hope that we do implement some sort of reach, some sort of math compacting for those children who who need it. And I just really hope, I want to also say, my children are thrilled to be in school, thrilled. Every day they get up, do we get to go today? Especially my first grader. Can we go in today? Thrilled. So thank you for making that happen. And I would love to see it continue. I would love to see it increase. I don't want to see it go the other way. And that's all I wanted to say, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Mrs. Joki. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jaclyn Joki from 9 Heritage Drive. I have two children at ALT, a first grader and a fourth grader. And I've been on these calls multiple months, weeks in a row. And I appreciate all the efforts that have been put in place to get our children back to school. My children are excited to be back in school, happy to go. However, I want to echo some of the same concerns that other ALT parents have addressed, Particularly, you know, I presented concerns on prior board meetings as far as what exactly are the children going to be doing in school? And what is the format for the distance home-based learning? Once, I work full-time. And so I'm not, unfortunately, I'm not involved in their care at home. But from my husband who addresses it and from talking to other families in the area, it seems that basically no changes have been made. And possibly some of the changes have been made that are worse than previously, unfortunately. Additionally, my concern is when the students are in school, I really don't have a great sense as to what's going on in school. As much as they enjoy it, when I try to ask them what they actually did, my one concern, my fourth grader, when I was asking, what did you do in math? It was unveiled that he was on Khan Academy Kids Doing Math in School, which to me seems very concerning. And I did not quite understand why he would be doing that in school. And certainly I can take the time and contact the teachers to try to figure out why this is happening. But honestly, I think that as a community in a district, I shouldn't have to individually ask that question because to me, common sense says that should not be happening. And then additional, just positive feedback is that there is some, my son, who receives speech therapy services, has been receiving synchronous speech therapy services. And we're very pleased and happy with how that's going. Obviously, there's, there's challenges involved in services such as that, especially when they are being done via Google Meet. But there is success in that. And I'm hoping that as a district, we can come up with a successful means to treat, teach our children and be more successful in this challenge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With this, we have reached the end of the second 15-minute block. I would need a motion from a board member.
Motion to extend for 15 minutes, Mrs. Zahn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members only, all those in favor? Again, all those nays, abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Rachel Singleton, please go ahead.
Rachel Singleton, 22, Delaware Trail West. First of all, I would like to say thank you to all the teachers without whom this whole thing would be falling apart. From what I've seen of it, the teachers are the paperclips and the parents are the sticky tape that are holding this together. They're doing a fantastic job for the main part in, quite frankly, doing what is the impossible, teaching a class in school and teaching those at home. And as others have said, this doesn't match any of my understanding through all the board meetings that I've sat through about how the model was supposed to work with dedicated distance learning teachers for either the Cohort D kids or the kids in A and B when they're at home. It is, the IT infrastructure I've seen is insufficient. Kicking out of Google Meets is a regular occurrence. One child said they got kicked out 35 times in one day. So that's 35 times in four hours and 30 minutes, of which actually, because I've noted when they're at home, 90 minutes of the four hours and 30 minutes is actually non-instructional time when they're at home. So they're getting kicked out of Google Meets. Teachers are using WebM videos which aren't loading. So that's being used as an instruct, as a mini lesson and for delivering instructions. And when children can't access this, that becomes frustrating. And if you have autism and you're not in Cohort C, and if you have ADHD because you are not in Cohort C and you are at home, this is detrimental and it's corrosive to their mental health. There's a lack of control that parents feel when they're home with their kids. They, they see what's going on in the class and there's just an inability to help them out of these technical hitches and glitches. And it's no better than it was in the spring. To some extent, in the spring, when teachers were just posting videos online, you could access those. But these, these WebM videos, we've come to a workaround today. But this is our third week in, and this is the first time that my kids will be able to actually access class content. So that's been quite frustrating. Then to the wellness, fitness and wellness. I actually witnessed this on Friday at the Pop Warner Field. It was a grade eight, fitness and wellness. And it's exactly that. It's convicts walking around the yard to exercise. I asked my son what class that was because I thought it was quite bizarre what was going on. And he said, oh, I'm glad you see that. That's what we call fitness and wellness.
We have reached the end of the minutes. Could you please wrap up in the next?
Yes, so there needs to be a bit more creativity in that. Because I actually, very close to Mount Horeb. And the kids I've heard out in their fitness and wellness classes at Mount Horeb have been laughing and screaming and giggling and having a whale of a time. And it was wonderful to hear. But the teenagers at, at the middle school were just walking and it looked sad and solitary. And it, it wasn't really providing any benefit other than fresh air. So to wrap up, I'd like to say kudos to the teachers. But this is, this is by no extent something we should be clapping ourselves on the back and saying that this is working well. This needs a lot of improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mr. Minieri, please go ahead.
Okay, hi, it's actually, oh, I gotta make my video go there. Hi, it's actually Gretchen Minieri. I'm at One Monday Lane. There I am. I have a fourth grader at Angelo Tomassao School, and I have a sixth grader at Warren Middle School. I guess, I want to say, I know this has been very difficult for the Board of Ed and all the teachers in the school. So I do appreciate, I just reiterate what everybody said, we do appreciate that this is a very difficult situation. And I have seen a change since the spring. I think there is still a bit of a disconnect, whereas in, I feel like my children are still doing the majority of the day here alone, having maybe a couple of Google Meets the entire day. I don't blame the technology issues that happen. The school, I understand, so that sometimes lessens that time together. But there still does seem to be quite a bit of time where they're by themselves, trying to figure out things. And I don't know how to fix that. But one of the things is I also have two high schoolers. I have a 10th grader and a senior. And the school system just, in Washington Hills, you probably know this already, they just stream the class to the kids that are home. So that the kids that are sitting in the classroom are being instructed by the teacher, and the teacher is teaching in front of the class to the children at home as well, who are, and I know there might be issues with this for our school, but who are actually on the board. So they're calling on the kids that are at home as well. They're raising their hands and then their face is popping up in front of their classmates and they're answering questions as well. So their entire day is live. They log in from one class to the next class, the entire time that they are home and are part of the classroom. So I wish that we could do a little bit more of that because I do understand, I'm sure this is impossible for children who don't read yet. But there are also a lot of other issues for children who need that interaction. My sixth grader is just, of my four children, is not able to operate in a virtual distance learning. It is not, is not meet the needs that he has. So today, for example, we had to just call him out of school for the day and explain that he would not be attending. And he's not ill, but it today would not work for him. So I'd also like to see if there's a way that we sort of record those. I have reached out to his teachers and his guidance counselor, and they are wonderfully, you know, helpful and are going to help work with this. But I have to imagine that there's other children too. And that maybe the feedback from other children and other families might help to also give us some more ideas for how we can make this work all around. And I also do want to add about the middle school gym. It is kind of funny, when my son's home in virtual, he goes out for a bike ride. But when he's at school, he walks in circles. And in the high school, they are having real gym. Like my son played tennis, my daughter was doing the ropes course. So.
You should end up with three minutes. Please, could you wrap it in the next 30 seconds?
Sure. So I would love to see if in the middle school, we can either make that actually an active period. Or conversely, since they're coming home to learn their language at home, that perhaps instead we swap their gym class for home and have their Spanish or Chinese or French classes in person. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Franco is a member of the public.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bellman. Yeah, I just wanted to put my comments in as a member of the public. Mark Franco, 16, Stoningham Drive. I have a third grader at Mount Horeb School. And I just wanted to say that I think we have to remember the circumstances on, under which we are living and the expectations that come from that. Is the situation for schooling perfect? Far from it. But I do want to say that so far, we have had an incredibly positive experience with my third grader at Mount Horeb. His teachers, Mick McMahon, Ms. Anice and Mr. Jones have done an exemplary job keeping the kids engaged. My son is incredibly independent at the moment. When we try and go in to help him, he says, I got this, don't worry. And he does, he's got it because he's been shown the way and he's been taught how to engage. And the teachers are with him all day and, and they keep him engaged in the material. So I just wanted to say that we've had a very positive experience. That goes primarily to, I believe, his teachers as well as his school principal, Mr. Cook, who I think is, I always think is a great guy and has done an exemplary job here. And I've had the fortunate privilege of being a little bit on the inside, seeing how the sausage is made to get to this point. And I understand the Herculean effort that has been made, and I think that that needs to be recognized as well. Would everyone prefer to be in school full-time, going back to the way it was? Yes, of course. But that's not reality at the moment. So we've got to work with what we have. And so far, I think we've done, at least from, for my student, a pretty good job. And I wanted to say thank you to everyone involved in making sure that that happens. So, and, and by the way, I do think that Mr. Cook and Mr. Jones and Mr. Mingle are very good role models for my son. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franco. Next, we have Mr. Greenberg. Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Greenberg, David Greenberg, 15, Conklin Lane. We have three children at ALT. We have a kindergartner and we also have twins, second graders. So we are really feeling the stress of the hybrid learning. My biggest concern is when they are in school.
I'm sorry, we're having trouble hearing you. If you can get closer to your microphone, that would be great.
Um, is that better? Okay.
Much better, thank you.
Thank you, okay. So, um, yes, so I have a kindergartner at ALT and I also have second grade twins. And my biggest concern is that when they are in school, they are on their devices. They're on their Chromebooks, they're on their iPads. I did not think that that's how school was going to look for them. I know there's other schools in the district. And I think even grades within ALT that are doing it a little bit differently. So that's confusing to me. And then the hybrid at home, it is still a lot on the parents. Like I said, my kindergartner, he can't go from one, you know, class to another, one assignment to another. And my second graders are better at it, but they're not great either. So it's, they can't go on with their day without us or me hovering over all three of them. So I don't know if other schools are doing it differently. And if they are, I just wish that we could look at how they're doing it. Maybe they're doing it in a better fashion and maybe we can echo that. And yes, to get them back in school, everybody would love that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Amy Olson. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you for giving me a chance to speak. First thing I want to say to the teachers at Woodland, I am beyond impressed. And the principal, Mr. Heaney, I am a school teacher myself. I, I teach in a district where we have been able to separate classes to hybrid and all virtual, leaving teachers with a little less work on their plates. So I commend everybody who, every teacher that's here on this Zoom, who is navigating both all virtual students and hybrid students. You have a huge task on your shoulders. I did want to bring up again, the second time at a board meeting here, about specials. I feel that specials are a really important of our, part of our kid's day. There was a suggestion in the summertime about specials being asynchronous. Well, at Woodland, that is how they have materialized. I am a specials teacher in Somerset County in another district. I have live face-to-face instruction. I have live instruction in a virtual setting with my students. I am scheduled in their day, even though it's a half-day. I feel that our specials being asynchronous lacks some integrity and not by the fault of the teachers. It's really by the challenges of the schedule that is currently here. If I'm to understand what's going on right now with all of us as a living, breathing document that can be looked at and reflected upon and possibly changed. I feel like specials really need to have time in our schedule. It's very difficult for a teacher to deliver meaningful instruction with a video. I can say this, being a teacher myself. You don't have an opportunity to engage with your students. It kind of takes you out of the equation. We use a Zoom platform. I heard another parent talk about the challenges of getting into and out of different classes. We use a Zoom platform in my district where the teachers switch. And there is one Zoom that each homeroom, homeroom has all day. The teachers switch, not the students. It alleviates those challenges of your youngest students being with the difficulty of navigating in and out of special, in and out of any class. I would just like to see that there are some changes to the specials at some point. I'm sure the teachers there are missing their faces of their students. There is nothing that can replace the need for interaction between student and teacher. And without a time in, built into the student's schedule to be able to do that, it kind of, it kind of marginalizes the specials teachers to some degree. And I'm sure that it's not an issue that can't be reflected on and looked at. So I guess that's kind of where I want to leave it. Teachers at Woodland, principal at Woodland, I commend you for everything that you're doing. I can't speak to any other district, but I do live 49 Mitchell, a third grader, had a fifth grader at Woodland School. Ms. Nisri and Mr. Yenish, yay, thank you so much. I am just so wildly impressed.
Thank you very much. We have reached the end of the third 15-minute block. We have two more people that have raised their hand. Do we hear a motion from the board?
I'll make a motion. I'll let those two people, three people now speak.
Now three people. That is a double. There's one person that already spoke.
He can speak again. I have no problem with that.
No, it's, it's his wife. Sorry, I signed off on my advice and signed on to his.
Perfect. Okay, so the motion for those three people.
I have a second. Ms. Chu, board members only, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstentions, extensions passed.
Thank you very much. Moving on, Mrs. Gardner, please move ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to raise my concerns. I'm at 88 Morning Glory Road. My children go to ALT. I myself am an educator. I am a special education educator for students on the autism spectrum. And I am live teaching in my kitchen since the first day that ALT started. since the first day the ALT started, from seven forty-five in the morning till ten forty-five when I, in the morning when I have a break. There is a massive disconnect going on here at ALT. I am constantly muting myself to help my children. I am fine helping my children. However, I went back to work and signed an agreement saying that I would not have my children or my spouse or my dog or et cetera bothering my working work ethic when I'm teaching my students. My children need help. They're in second grade and third grade and they need their help from a teacher that's going to be on a Google Meet all day, like their mom is, to help her students so that my children have a teacher that they can go to and ask a teacher for help. Something very reflective from the eyes of our fourth grader writing assignment first week of school was, what's the best thing about school so far? And what's the worst thing? And our fourth grade daughter wrote that the worst thing is that she does not have access to a teacher, since she is home learning, to ask questions to once the Google Meet is exited after five to eight minutes. I, as an educator, raised my concerns to my son's third grade teachers at ALT, who are getting massive kudos and shout outs from me because they took my suggestions as a parent and as an educator and made changes to their teaching. So massive shout out to those third grade teachers who are staying on live Google Meets more with my son, who needs some more help, who's not so independent. Everybody needs to be cohesive and synchronous. I just, I think ALT needs to get on board and raise the bar a little higher. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Mrs. Amal, please go ahead.
Hold on, put my camera on. Hi, good evening, Jennifer Armayo, twenty-four, Briarwood Drive East. I have three children in the school district. I have one daughter in fifth grade at Mount Horup, who's thrilled to be back. She's having a fantastic experience so far. She's having a really good, good start to the year. I have an eighth grader who's also doing well. But I came on tonight to speak about my seventh grader, who has an IEP. Previously to the virtual cohorts going, he was always in smaller classes of six to nine children, where he would get the individual attention he needed from the teacher to do his classwork, get extra help. They would focus on what he was struggling with, give extra work for that topic to reinforce his skills. Now, when he's in these classes, this year, it's groups of, you know, twenty kids. Some of the classes are even bigger with the kids being at home at the same time. And he, I feel like he's really getting lost. His IEP, I feel, is not being met, his needs. I do want to thank Dr. Beatrice Schwarzkopf at the middle school, has been amazing in helping him get to school, checking in with him. She did a video chat with him the other day to see how he was doing and just checking and see how he's doing with adjusting to school in general. She has been really helpful to me, working with him. I just wanted to reiterate what I heard a few people say, Rosa Kraus said it, how I was under the impression that there was going to be a teacher teaching the children in the classroom and then a teacher teaching the kids who were home. I didn't realize everyone was going to be on the same Google Meet at the same time, causing lots of internet connection problems and just working on the system in general. And I asked him the other day, when he was reluctant to go to school and it was his cohort day to go to school. And he told me that it's really no different whether he sits at his computer at the kitchen table or sits at his computer at his desk. There's no attention given to the students. Everyone's just looking at a screen all day and doing their schoolwork through the screen, logging in and out of classes, very difficult for him to keep up. Some of the teachers say, go read an article and come back and we'll discuss it. But he reads at a much slower pace than many of the kids in the class. So by the time he comes back to the Google Meet, they're already discussing the article and he's missing lessons. I think the timing of some things are not working out. I just feel like kids with IEPs need a little bit of a different structure to the day. Something needs to be worked on with maybe teachers, working in smaller groups with these kids instead of having the whole class on at one time, maybe dedicating time during the day, during that class, to just pull out kids with, they're going to be showing a video that day that the kids can actually talk and discuss and have their educational needs met from those teachers.
We are at the three minutes, could you please wrap it in the next thirty seconds?
Other than that, you know, my other two kids who are not having IEPs are doing well. They're adjusting. And I would also like to say that the wellness time at the middle school, I like to see it a little bit more interactive so the kids can have a little bit more fun rather than just walking and not really being able to talk with their friends. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Castagna, please move ahead.
Hi, sorry for the confusion. Lauren Castagna and I am Monday Lane. I, first of all, want to thank everyone again. I want to thank the ALT community for speaking up because I have been on the phone with half of them through text messages these last two weeks about how upsetting it is to see our children not getting what they deserve, getting what we've been told they would get. Talking with other parents in other schools, not only within our district, within our area, Watchham, Berkeley Heights, all of these schools are having live sync learning. I want to pinpoint some of the words I'm hearing other parents from the other schools say. The, when their students are being taught by the teachers or when they're being, having discussion of the article. My fourth grader has had none of this. And I don't believe it's the teacher's fault. The teachers, the kids, from what I have understood, the kids go home or in aftercare. And the teachers are then pre-recording their lessons for the next day. That's putting double the work on the teachers as well. This is what I saw homeschooling my kids in April, in May. I saw a pre-recorded lesson where then I had to pretend to be a teacher and answer those questions for him and figure out how to do a writing assignment. Because I could not talk to that screen of a teacher, who was a very good teacher, on the lesson that she taught about a fractured fairy tale or things like that. I had to email her. That is not teaching. That is listening to a video. And I'm telling you, some of you might be zoning out on me talking right now because you can only look at a video for so long. My fourth grader, my kindergartner, is going to listen to that teacher and then he's going to zone out and doodle or do something else. And there's no accountability of a teacher on the other side, seeing my son like this, being like, Mr. Castagna, are you with us? Can you answer that question? There's no accountability. And I have yet to hear anything about the effects of staring at a screen all day. If I'm sending my children to school and risking them being around other people, I don't want them staring at the computer. It's affecting their eyesight, it's affecting their headaches. It causes long-term brain effects. If you look that up, it is true, staring at a screen for this long. I get it if they're staring at a screen at home, distance learning. That's happening, that has to happen. But when my children go to school and they're on a desk and I ask my son, what did you do? Oh, the first thing I did is I get my Chromebook and I open it and I follow the instructions of the day and I click on my YouTube video, waiting for the nine o'clock morning meeting. It's not appropriate, it's not acceptable. We don't pay the taxes. We do to live in this district for the schooling that we know these teachers can do, that I know personally these teachers have in them that they want to do. They're not being allowed to do what we want them to do. But apparently, all the other schools, and I'm so excited for Mount Horup. Mr. Franco, that sounds amazing for your third grader. Like, I want to switch my kid to Mount Horup now because I think my children deserve that. Mr. Cook, that's phenomenal. I'm proud of you as a principal for facilitating this for your children. But I'm just want to end with telling you, when I asked, somebody asked my son, who's in fourth grade, how is school? He's like, it's okay, I just really miss learning from my teacher. To have my fourth grader say that broke my heart. And that's why we are speaking up today. And I will continue speaking up until it is changed. Thank you.
Very much. I want to open it up to the administration to address some of the questions that were raised today. Dr. Mingle.
Mr. Bellman, I think since that was the public commentary for agenda items, I could address those topics with the second public commentary. I don't, most of them didn't affect the business agenda. That way we can do the business agenda and then we can talk about those things all together.
Makes sense, thank you. With that, moving on to agenda item twelve. Do we have any board member that wants to pull out for discussion or for a special vote? One of the agenda items? I see no hand raised, I see nothing. Oh, Mrs. Chu, please go ahead.
I assume I need to pull out C eight to abstain.
I think this is appropriate. Anything else? Mr. Breezy?
Related to C eight, I just wanted to personally wish Mrs. Chu the best. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with her. Her insights have been invaluable, certainly for me. You have an educational background that I do not have and I can't have it. I just don't know what you know. So thank you very much for my own growth and opportunity to work with you and certainly wish you and your family the best. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Zahn, could you please?
Certainly. Motion to approve items for board consideration, section twelve, items A one through seven, B one through eleven, C one through seven, C nine and ten, and D one.
One second.
Second, Mr. Franco?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brzee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve items for board consideration, section twelve, item C eight.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brzee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu, Ms. Chu?
Stained.
Thank you. Mr. DiMaggio?
Sadly, yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. That brings us to agenda item, the routine unfinished business. I'm not aware of any unfinished business, but does any board member want to bring up unfinished business? Thanks, I'm seeing none. New business, I'm also not aware of any new business, but does any board member have a new business item they want to bring forward? Please, visual motion. Seeing none, moving on to public commentary on any topic. This opens up our second block. It's pretty much the same rules and can be about anything in our district. With that, I'm opening it up to, I think, Mrs. Amal and Castagna, we have just still left from before. Mr. Franco, you're the first, please go ahead.
Yeah, Mark Franco, sixteen, Stoningham. Just something I forgot to mention before. And it was something that Ms. Garten touched on. I think it's important that as a parent, you be in touch with your kid's teacher and go through the hierarchy of communication. Even before my time as a board member, the teachers have been incredibly responsive if me or my wife had a question or concern related to our son. And if we didn't get a result from the teacher, we could always go to the school principal. And we've never, we've never had to go beyond that because we've already gotten, always gotten an adequate response and reaction. So I think it was Mrs. Joki, if I'm not mistaken, who said that she didn't feel that she should have to contact her teacher. But I think that's, I think that's completely the wrong approach. I think you have to contact your teacher, your kid's teacher, if you think that there's something of concern. So I would encourage you all to do that if, if, if there's something that's not getting met to your expectations. That's all, thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franco. Mrs. Bodilo, please go ahead.
Hi, Jessica Bodilo, nine Brady. One of the things I just wanted to point out, I had a email discussion with Dr. Mingle regarding the policy of the district for using last names of any of the children in any media publications. And I just wanted to see if we could possibly make it a district policy not to release the last names of any children to any media outlet, despite whether or not the, maybe the publication will not print the story without the names. Then maybe we should have a policy where we don't give the story to those publications. I just, I'm not really a hundred percent familiar with what the formal policy is. I know that you guys have a lot of other things going on, but as we start the school year here, I know there's going to be more things that will be published. And it just bothers me that, you know, it happened to my kid. Their last name was in the Warren Monthly paper, the paper, the physical paper. And I just wanted to prevent that from happening because it would be a shame not to have to provide that information because we don't want their last names published. But I don't think I have to explain why I wouldn't want the last name published. I think everybody understands the reasons for that, but just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Mrs. Joki, please go ahead.
Hi, Jaclyn Joki from nine Heritage Drive. I just want to, you know, clarify, I don't have a problem reaching out to the teachers. If I have concerns, I will gladly reach out to the teachers. You know, we're in week three of school at this, maybe four, I'm losing track. But we haven't even had back to school night to get an understanding of what's going on. But my, my point was, is so early on in seeing the format and other expressions from ALT parents and what's happening in school learning for our children, you know, just questioning Khan Academy being used in person as well as some other online formats in person is concerning to me. And I'll gladly reach out to the teachers. But I don't want to be questioning every action that the teacher's doing. And I, you know, I really find it hard, all of these meetings, I've found very challenging because I feel like a lot of parents and community members, you kind of feel like if you don't have anything nice to say, then really just don't say anything at all. But I think you can see that a lot of families and parents are concerned about what they're observing and seeing going on in our schools. And so you have to say something. And yes, reaching out to the teacher is appropriate, but some of what's going on, everyone needs to be aware of. And as a community, we need to address this. And it's not, it shouldn't be the responsibility of the teacher to figure this all out and to execute it. We really need to support them and come up with a plan together. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Clark, please go ahead.
Hi, Lori Clark, fifty, Skyline Drive. And I just want to say thank you again. As every, a lot of people have mentioned here, Mount Horup is doing a great job, Go Gators. Really awesome job, Mr. Cook and the staff there. I really have just two issues I want to raise. My son has a 504 plan and many of the accommodations that are outlined in this 504 plan are very difficult to implement in this setting, whether it's in school or remote. So I was wondering if there was any plans to address those issues and sort of take a look at 504 plans in general to make them more beneficial for students who require them across the board, given these, this environment and these circumstances. And then secondly, I also heard that special services like ASAP reading and things like that were not going to be offered at all. And my daughter needs that. Another person, you know, referenced earlier that first graders who were learning how to read lost basically half the year. And so my daughter's now in second grade and she's having a difficult time reading. And she really needs that service that she was getting last year. And she got it over the summer and now it's not being offered this year. So I was wondering if there was any plans moving forward for those services to be reinstituted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Amal. Moving on to Mr. Minieri, please go ahead, or Mrs. Minieri.
All right, get me this time, Christian. How you doing? Michael Minieri, one Monday Lane. And I just, I just wanted to, I think, reiterate a couple of things that people said that really hit home for me. One of the things is that I had spoken about before is that just with the collaboration with the parents. And I know we had talked about. And I know we have talked about town halls and having that give and take, which doesn't seem to be going forward. I don't know sure why we're not having that to the town hall forum. But in the point of, you know, sort of previewing for the parents what was going to happen in the fall. Right? Because if you had previewed the fact that my kid is going to go to school and watch videos all day, I think that you heard back from a lot of parents saying that, well, that really doesn't correspond to what we would have thought in-person learning, frankly. Remote learning for sure too, but especially in-person, right? The whole point of going to school is to interact with your teacher, also interact with your classmates. They're not getting that. That's a problem, right? And I feel like we're not addressing that. And the way to address that is to say, well, go talk to your teacher. It's not the teachers that are making that up, right? I assume that somebody put together a curriculum and somebody approved that curriculum and the teachers are teaching that curriculum. So to go and say, oh, teacher, I'm having a problem, you're putting it at the feet of people who may not actually have the ability to fix the problem. So it would be nice to actually fix the problem that's being identified by the parents. Would have nice to have been, had a little bit of a preview for that, right? Because we would have probably given some feedback and said, maybe that doesn't work. But I hope that you guys take into consideration the feedback you're getting from us. It would be nice to be more collaborative. It would be nice to have an idea of what's going on going forward in the future. So I appreciate it. Thanks very much. Thanks, Christian.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Mrs. Singleton, please go ahead.
Hi, Chris. You got me again. Scott Walker, 22 Deerwood Trail. I kind of, I kind of want to reiterate what a couple of the other parents have said. It's not about reaching out to the teachers. We have researched the teachers. The teachers are fantastic. The teachers are doing the absolute best job they can. The teachers are as frustrated with this, I believe, as the parents are. What I'm not seeing is an acceptance from the leadership that this is not working out. We got sunshine and roses for the first 20 minutes of this call of how wonderful everything is. Yet, when the parents come on, that, that's, that's not what's happening. There is no sunshine and roses. So going to the teachers, it's not about not being able to collaborate with the teachers. They are fantastic. They are capable of delivering excellent quality education to our children. But they're working within a construct that's been set by the leadership that's on this call. And I'm not seeing the people on this call be accountable and responsible. I'm not seeing an acceptance that things aren't working. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Mrs. Pucci, please go ahead.
Work?
Yeah, I think I'm you.
Yeah, I think it did. Hi, it's Mark Pucci, 33 Washington Valley Road, Warren. Just want to make a quick recommendation on the board's process. It's great that we're able to provide, you know, there's two sessions for public commentary, but the way this is operating, it's effectively one session. So my recommendation is on a go-forward basis for Dr. Mingle to respond to the first session of commentary before the second opportunity is allowed. That way, there's an opportunity for increased dialogue. Right now, again, it's just kind of one extended session, just broken into two pieces. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Singleton?
Thanks, Chris. Rachel Singleton, 22 Deerwood Trail. I wanted to ask what happened to looking into getting a town hall for parents and community members to contribute and give feedback to the board in an extended format, not quite a Joe Rogan of three or four hours, but an extended format that's more than the three minutes that were allowed during these sessions. So I was wondering what happened to that, where it went to. I'm sure that there's still a need for it. I'm sure that I'm not the only person who's wondering, and I might be there.
It seems that she is frozen. Thank you very much. I see that this was the last member. I don't see anybody else raising the hand. With that, I want to move on to the next agenda item, agenda item 16. Mrs. Stone, could you please? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Dr. Mingle, could you please address some of the questions that were asked?
Yes, thank you. Let me address Mrs. Bodilo's question that's unrelated to return to school first. So as far as the last name, so we did have an interaction. I know she spoke in this region as well. The issue is that there are some local news agencies that will not, will not publish stories without us giving the last name. Parents have the right to refuse permission for that in the registration process. Unfortunately, that means we can't share stories that involve their children, but that is something that parents can do. We don't like it either. Also don't think that students' last names should be published. We've made that clear to the publisher of that, you know, news outlet, but there's not a lot more I can do about that. As far as the return to school topics and kind of general process and things, I just want to point out for Mr. Pucci that the reason tonight there were, there were not comments in the first time is that the first public comment by board policy and by law is supposed to be only comments related to the agenda that is on for action of the board. And so there is only one public commentary in each meeting for general other information, which is why they were held together tonight's meeting. But as you know from other meetings, there have been quite a few in the last few months where we've done a lot of administrative feedback about questions and responses as best we can, which is also not the normal procedure for a board meeting. So it's wonderful that everybody cares as much as they do about their children's education. That's one of the things that makes Warren Township so great and the school district so great. I have attended the board meetings of lots of other school districts in the last three months to make sure that I'm up to date on how others are doing things. So when people mention a certain school district, I either reach out to that superintendent or I go to one of their board meetings. I don't think there's another board in the area that is as responsive to hearing from the public than this one. And that includes the administration. So I think that, just want to say, we should keep in mind the perspective there. Every other surrounding district does not, no other surrounding district even allows community members to participate in the Zoom calls. People in one neighboring district are allowed to email questions. That's the only way to ask them. In others, they can watch a stream. So I just want to, a little point of defense for the board and for myself, we are extremely responsive to trying to make sure that we're getting the good feedback and doing the best we can. So with that in mind, I'm very appreciative of the feedback and especially the examples that people shared about ways they think it could be improved. And the examples, as I said, from other school districts because that allows us to go back and touch base with those. I mean, in the last week, I talked to the superintendents of probably half a dozen other districts about their experiences. Some of the districts that are cited, maybe not in public commentary, but in emails that some of the people who made public commentary sent in, those districts are in full distance learning only. And there's a big difference between what we can expect from a teacher who is home or in full distance in school versus managing multiple. And that goes to, you know, multiple versions. And I, and I hear the concern about teachers being expected to do both. So where that came from, as a reminder, is that in the very initial discussions way back in, I think it was the beginning of July at this point, we talked about trying to come up with a model where we could have separate instructors. The problem with that, which we talked about at length in the beginning of August when we presented the overall plan, and then when Mr. Kimmick, in the middle of August, gave a presentation about what the day would look like. The problem with having dedicated distance learning teachers is it makes it extremely difficult to allow changes back and forth between the models. And we have had somewhere around 5% of our students switch models since the first day of school or since their initial discussion. And the reason we're able to accommodate that without, you know, even though we say there's a 30-day wait period, we have not held to that for a single case so far, is because the teachers don't have to change. And if we had dedicated teachers, that would be harder. One of the questions that'll go out in the survey to K2 full distance learning families tomorrow is how they would feel about changing that. So would it be better, just what people are bringing up? Would it be better to have a dedicated distance learning teacher, knowing though that once that's in place, it will make coming back into hybrid very difficult for a family because the teacher would have to change again? So we are very aware of that concern and that question. So we're trying to get more feedback. One of the things that we'll do, there's, there's three different surveys that will go live in the next couple of days. I mentioned two at the beginning. One is for our K2 full distance families because they will, their decisions about whether to come back when it's full-time K1 and 2 have a huge impact on the operations of how we do that. The second group I mentioned are the families of kindergartners who enrolled and then disenrolled. The third is our, as we committed to doing a general community survey at the end of each month, just like we did all throughout the spring. The benefit of that is, and the timing is really nice because we can take the comments made tonight and take the themes and then ask them in question format so that we can find out what all 1,500 students and their families think and what their experiences are, which will help us analyze, say, you know, what we heard in the anecdotal comments tonight was a very different experience at one school versus another with two schools barely mentioned. What we need to figure out through the survey process is when we ask everybody, does that hold true? If so, where are the anomalies? And then we can definitely take action to address it. So I appreciate the timing and the comments. And the other, you know, the kind of the, the tension between synchronous and asynchronous is also really challenging. We talked about it a lot over the summer. So the models of having full distance learning where kids are watching a stream of a classroom like at the high school are not recommended in the professional literature for the youngest learners. There are models that some have mentioned where you could have like a room available where kids can pop in and out if they have questions is a good sort of middle ground. And so that's good feedback that we can, we can explore. As you all know, our teachers and many have said, our teachers are phenomenal. They want to do the best job that they possibly can. And, you know, it's, it's two weeks in. They, they came back and they're working on it. And I'm sure this, the feedback will be helpful there as well. And as one person mentioned, back to school nights haven't occurred yet. And so I think people will get some, some of those questions answered there as well. And the other survey that people here wouldn't see is we survey our teachers regularly. So the comment about, I think the teachers know it's not working and they would have other ideas. They have a way to give us that feedback about what they think is going well. They have a spot where we ask them what they think should be improved and what supports they need. And we ask them, is there anything else administration may not be aware of that we should be aware of? That feedback goes through our process with our administrative team to make sure we're finding trends and acting on them. So definitely very interested in getting all of that and making sure that we take good actions. What we can't do is take rapid shifts because that causes other ripple effects. You know, for example, I totally agree about the importance of our special schedule. I mean, I was involved with music all the way through college and even as an adult. Not being able to do that synchronously in school is really challenging. But we, we made decisions about prioritizing health and safety and not letting students mix cohorts. And as a result, the schedule when kids are in person is very much tied to their core academics. That was based on feedback from the surveys we received last spring. And so what I would encourage people to do when they get the parent survey is make sure they express those different opinions in those surveys because we act on it. We act based on that information. And certainly when we go to full days down the road, hopefully sooner than later, it'll be a lot easier to address those other areas. But that goes back to the health and safety concerns and everything else. To that point, somebody asked, why not K through 5 or why not further? Believe me, we would all prefer that we could bring everybody back. The list of obstacles that we have to come up with solutions for just to address K and 1 and hopefully 2 has 30 or 40 action items because we have to make sure that we can still meet all the health and safety guidelines. We don't mix cohorts. We have enough staffing to supervise not only the kids in school, but also students who might still remain in distance learning. So we definitely hear all the concerns and agree with many of them. It's a process to analyze and make sure that we're making the right recommendations. There are a couple of other things I just wanted to clarify that were kind of individualized. Why the health form when not in school? For those that have been at every board meeting, you know that our original recommendation was to only do the health form when students were in school. There was feedback at the last board meeting to reconsider that. Our committees reconsidered it and made the decision that based on the fact that the cohorts change regularly, it would be much to our benefit to get an early indicator when students are not in school, if there's a lot of illness popping up in one grade level or one classroom so that we're prepared for that. So that's, that's the reason. We also got some feedback from some parents and from our nurses that just the habit of doing it in a routine every single morning, we all know it takes like 30 seconds, is really helpful so that we don't miss it on one day or another. So that's why we do that every day. And as far as gifted education, which in some places is REACH E2, also ASAP services and all those. Right now, we have to do a really good assessment of where students are and where they're coming back from. So in the spring, there was a lot of conversation at board meetings about how will we know if there was learning loss and if so, where it was and how significant it was. You received a letter from Mr. Kimmick just last week. A lot of that assessment is happening this week. Once we have that information, our teachers and the service providers will be able to figure out the best way to meet that, whether that's ASAP, gifted education, so on and so forth. So those services are not eliminated. There are some staff members who have been assigned to other places because our priority was getting schools reopened. And necessarily some ASAP teachers, some REACH teachers are in other places. But the programs will come back at the appropriate time when we have the information we need to put the students in the right place where they should be. And I know there were a lot of comments about if we had given some of this information ahead of time. I just want to reiterate that the website has all of the information that was made public all summer long. At the one-hour info sessions we did for early element, for elementary, for middle school, we talked about the fact that the reality would be that in this model, there's going to be times where being in school feels a lot like being at home because of the need to sometimes be on technology. For example, if there's somebody supporting the room that has to support multiple classrooms. And we heard a lot of concern in the spring about the feeling of community being lost. And so one of the areas we prioritized at the opening of the school year was making sure students who are in homeroom X, whether they're in hybrid A or B, feel like they're one part of one homeroom. And the way that we're doing that is through joint morning meetings and check-ins in some classrooms and closing meetings. If we, if the feedback is that that is not a good use of time and energy and that it would be better just to make the community feel, you know, just the hybrid A part of that homeroom is one community and the hybrid B is a different, then that's something that we could look at in Pivoton. But we need to get more data about that than anecdotal. And then finally, there were comments from the public about sort of chain of command issues. And I just want to reiterate that. The reason why teachers are the best place to go for individual student experience questions is they have the best answers about what's happening in their individual location. And sometimes it might be a simple answer that, you know, maybe doesn't ease the concern forever, but it might ease it for that immediate moment. If you're unhappy or you feel like it's a bigger issue than one classroom and one student's experience, the principal is the next place at the school level. And then after that is the curriculum director. And everybody is very accessible. I can't promise it'll be within 24 hours. There's a lot, you know, right now, everybody is both running the micro, the day-to-day operation of keeping the schools open safely and the macro of planning for the next phase. And so we're doing all the, those, those things all at once. And so it might take 48 hours instead of 24 hours. And I ask that we are attentive to that. After the curriculum director comes me and then the Board of Education is appeal of the superintendent. So that is the typical procedure. But again, thank you for the feedback. As, as all of you know who have been at the meetings all summer, every comment that's made, I record. It's shared with the appropriate people so that we can take action and follow up on it. Mr. Bellman?
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. And I'm sorry for close to moving over that. As you mentioned, this is not our normal policy, but it is so tremendously helpful during these challenging times to have this dialogue, to have some answers to these questions that we have. With that, now I want to move on to action item 16 on the agenda. Mrs. Stone, could you please?
Certainly. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 104-11 permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation and/or matters of attorney-client privilege. Action may be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 30 minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Do I have a second?
Second, Benham.
Board of Education members only. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The board will now be going into executive session.
Just so everybody knows, we'll move everybody into the waiting room and then I'll bring the board members back in. When the board comes back to public session, anybody still in the waiting room will be invited back into the public meeting at that time.